Hi, this is Kathy. Can you hear me?
Yes. Hi Kathy.
Hi, everybody.
Are you all set?
Yes ma'am.
Alright, then. And Noel, you're on, right? Don't want to start without you, Mr. Doran, so.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
I'm ready.
Alright, then, I shall call the April 8th, 2021 meeting of the Pondale Planning Commission to order, and ask everybody to please join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much, and that will bring us to roll call for our meeting.
Chair Nemeth?
Here.
Vice Chair Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Frogasains?
Here.
Commissioner Henderson?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Thank you.
Alright, wonderful, we're all here this evening. That will bring us to the review of our agenda, Ms. Taggart.
Thank you. There is one memorandum for item 8B, which you all received prior to the meeting, modifying a condition of approval and then providing some comment letters we received on the environmental document for that item.
Okay, thank you, and I'd just like to confirm, did all of the commissioners receive the communication for item 8B?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, perfect, and then there were also some comments sent out for that. Did you receive that email as well?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Taggart. Alright, then may I please get a motion till we have the full reading of all resolutions on our agenda for this meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion from Commissioner Frogasains and a second from Commissioner Henderson. Um, we need to do a voice vote on this, right, Mr. Doran? Okay. Ms. Zidman, can we please do a voice vote on that?
Chair Nemeth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Frogasains?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Alright, thank you very much. That will bring us to item 6, public comments on our consent calendar items or on any items that are not on our agenda. So do we have any Zoomies listening to us that have any comments on items that are not on our agenda or on our consent calendar? Our consent calendar consists simply of the approving the minutes from our last month's meeting. I'm gonna believe then that there's nobody with any comment on that. So that will move us to our consent calendar, which is approving our minutes from our last meeting. May I get a motion on that, please?
Will you approve this calendar?
A second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Henderson and a second from Commissioner Smith. May I please get a voice vote call on that, Ms. Zidman?
Chair Nemeth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery? Vice Chair.
Yes.
Commissioner Frogasains?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Our minutes from last month's meeting are approved, and that will bring us to our first public hearing, which is item 8A. And Ms. Taggart?
Thank you. This will be presented by Jasmine Alvarado.
Hi, good evening.
Hi there Jasmine, welcome.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yes, thank you.
Alrighty, so tonight we have conditional use permit 19-016. The applicant has submitted a request to expand. The applicant has submitted a request to expand an existing restaurant and establish a type 41 on sale beer and.
Actually Jasmine, this is fine because I think our applicant is connecting at the moment, so we want to make sure that they're in attendance as well.
Alright, can we still?
Yeah, that's right. Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so um, they are establishing a type 41 on sale beer and wine alcoholic beverage control license for the conception at a bona fide restaurant called La Roco's. It's located at 1645 East Pondale Boulevard. As shown on the aerial photo, the restaurant location is within the designated area. The existing 2018 square foot restaurant is located within streets G and H of the developed shopping center. The restaurant will expand into the adjacent tenant space suite F, which will increase the floor area of the existing restaurant by 1,245 square feet, for a total of 3,263 square feet. The project site is located within the C3 zone, and the proposed use is permitted under Pondale Municipal Code Section 1776.010, subject to the approval of a CUP application. There are no exterior modifications being proposed with the expansion. Uh, here's the proposed floor plan for the La Roco's restaurant, which represents the expansion into the adjacent tenant space and includes additional seating, a dance floor, and a stage area for entertainment. The applicant is conditioned to attain a entertainment permit. Uh, the project is considered a bona fide restaurant with alcohol sales because the restaurant has an operational kitchen, food is served until one half hour prior to the closing, and patrons are not served while standing at a counter. Uh, no more than 10% of the gross floor area will be used for the sale, display, and storage of alcohol, and no more than 30% of the gross floor area will be utilized as a dance floor. The applicant is proposing to operate the establishment on Monday through Thursday from 9:00 AM to 12:00, uh, 10:00 PM, and Friday through Sunday from 9:00 AM to 12:00 AM. The PNC, uh, for the PNC, the planning commission, they consider following to determine if the CUP should be approved, uh, whether the proposed establishment would result in over intensification of alcoholic beverage establishments, whether the proposed establishment would be located within a high crime area, information of the surrounding area, and the hours of operation. Uh, so there are two methods. Uh, the first method is population density. Um, currently there are 98 on sale alcoholic beverage establishments in the city, and the city population is 152,750 people. Um, citywide, there's a population average of one on sale ABC license allowed per 1,558 people. According to, uh, the population density method, the project will not contribute to an over intensification because three on sale establishments are allowed, and there are none existing within the census chart. Uh, the second method of over intensification is the retail density method. Uh, this method determines a site to be over intensified from the number of on sale establishments within a 25, 2,500 square foot of the location exceeds the average of the number of on sale establishments within the radius of 2,500 feet of the ra- of random selection of 20 on sale establishments. This site would not have an over intensification because up to 10 on sale establishments are allowed within the radius, and there are two existing within this radius. Therefore, there would be, there would not be an over intensification of on sale alcoholic beverage establishments. So the project site is located within crime reporting district 2610, uh, which exists at high crime at 641% of the citywide average crime rate. However, according to the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, there were five calls, um, for service reported at or near the site from March 18th, 2020 to March 18th, 2021. And after review of the past calls, um, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department has indicated, has not indicated in the opposition to the approval of this CUP. And, um, some location standards or location standards that per the PNC, a bona fide restaurant, um, and incidental beverage establishments shall be separated 1,000 feet from sexually oriented businesses, and this project meets the standard. So with that in conclusion, uh, the three options for the planning commission are to approve, continue, or deny the project. Option 1 is recommended, and that concludes our discussion. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Ms. Alvarado. Do any of the commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? Okay, Ms. Alvarado, I do have one question. It's regarding parking. Um, I understand with the expansion, obviously ideally there would be more customers there. How is the, I believe that they said that they needed 21 parking spaces? Um, how does the city determine the number of parking spaces needed for location within a strip mall?
So we definitely analyzed, um, the current parking, the onsite current parking. Um, currently there are 162 parking spaces, and, um, after we analyzed the onsite, um, parking spaces and the actual demand, uh, was determined that there would be sufficient parking.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, at this time, I would like to open the public hearing on this item, and if you are in the meeting to speak on this item, you will have three minutes to speak. I do want to let you know that it is not a dialogue, so if you have questions, I'll be writing them down. The other commissioners will be paying attention, and we'll do our best to get your questions answered in our commission discussion portion, so.
There are no raised hands. There are no raised hands at this time, Chair Nemeth.
Thank you. Is our applicant available? Mr. Lara, are you here? I see your name. Mr. Lara, are you online? Can you hear us? Oh, you're typing. Is that going to, who's ma- manning that, Carlene? Is that going into a chat?
Have the chat open, um, Chair Nemeth, and it looks like nothing has been typed at this moment.
Alright. Can somebody help us out and see if, I don't know how to. I don't know what I'm doing now. I'm out of my element.
Yeah, we'll, we'll reach out, um, to him and see if he's having some technical difficulties.
Thank you.
Seems like his microphone works great, but his speakers aren't working.
Yeah, no, no messages are coming through.
Okay. Well. I did have a couple of questions for the applicant, so I don't know how to handle this.
Can the applicant go through chat?
They're not seeing any questions coming through chat at the moment.
Currently trying to message the applicant, um.
He just responded and said that they're having some technical difficulties.
Yeah, but you can get a message to him, Tom, we can hear him fine.
We can hear the typing happen. It's interesting.
Do you guys see the chat that just came through?
Yes.
Yes.
It shows that he's muted on this side. Jasmine or Megan, can you reach out to the applicant via their cellphone and have them call in versus dialing to the Zoom, please?
Definitely will do.
Chair Nemeth, if it is acceptable to you and the other commissioners, perhaps we should move on to the next item and then revisit this item until the applicant has, um, their technical difficulties or is able to call in.
Okay, Ms. Taggart, does that sound like that would be agreeable? I don't, we're already in our.
I'm so sorry. Um, I just spoke with the applicant, they are having technical difficulties, but we are going to call them now.
Okay, Mr. Doran, what is the proper way for us to continue this till a little bit later this evening?
Sure, you could table this item and, and take on the next item, and then at the conclusion of that item, if, if the applicant is rejoin, then we could go back to item 8A. Um, or you could even, you know, table 8B in the middle of it if, if you would prefer. So we can either wait, we can table it until the end, or we can move forward and then pause in the middle. It's up to you, Chair Nemeth.
Alright. Well, commissioners, um, I think just in all fairness, so that Mr. Lara can participate, um, it would be wise for us to table this until he's able to connect. Um, may I get a motion for something to that effect, please? I will make a motion to table item 8A until, um, we can get our applicant connected to our meeting properly.
Respect the motion.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. May we please get a voice call on that, Ms. Zidman?
Chair Nemeth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Barton, you're muted.
Yes.
Commissioner Frogasains?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. So Mr. Lara, this item will be tabled until we can get you properly connected so you can participate in the rest of the public hearing. Thank you. And then that will bring us to item 8B.
Alright, and this item will also be presented by Assistant Planner Alvarado.
Can you see my screen here?
Yes, perfectly, thank you. Okay, and I do want to make sure, is our applicant for this item, I know we moved up a little faster, so I'd like to make sure that the applicant and any city staff that need to participate. And any consultants? Is everybody on that needs to be?
Everybody's in, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So tonight, the applicant has submitted a, uh, request to self-divide a, um, parcel of land and totally approximately 28 acres into three parcels and construct a commercial travel center on approximately 9 acre west, um, westernmost parcel. As shown on the aerial photo, the project site is located north of Pure Blossom Highway and west of Fort Town Hall Road. Uh, the approximately 28 acre site is proposed to be subdivided into three parcels. Uh, parcel number one will be approximately 16 acres and will continue to function as an assistance swap. Development of, uh, travel centers proposed on approximately 9 acre number two, and, uh, parcel number three would remain unimproved at this time. Uh, the development of the travel center is shown here on the site plan, SPR 21-001. Uh, includes construction of approximately 11,600 square foot travel center building, one commercial vehicle fueling and parking area, and one non-commercial vehicle fueling and parking area, and on and off-site infrastructure. The site plan depicts three points of access to from Pure Blossom Highway and one from Fort Town Hall Road. Project proposes a roadway which will extend north from Pure Blossom Highway along the eastern edge of the proposed site. As depicted in the figures here, the architecture is a modern style and includes design elements, colors, and finishes that provide for variation and visual interest in the building elevation. Uh, building materials consist of vertical metal panels, horizontal vintage wood, cement siding, and metal canopies to accentuate the entrances. The initial use permit 21-001 is a request for approval of a 24-hour travel center with a type 20 off-sale and beer and wine and ABC license and the sale of tobacco and smoking products. As depicted here on the floor plan, the proposed travel center is considered to be an incidental alcoholic beverage establishment with alcohol sales because the center sells alcoholic beverages for consumption off premises and utilizes no more than 10% of the 4 acres sold, displayed, and storage of alcoholic beverages.
Hello, I'm sorry for the delay.
Hey there, Lara. Thank you, I'm glad you made it.
I'm so sorry. Yes, yes, we were having problems connecting, but here we are.
Okay, that is okay. Then since you are available, Ms. Alvarado, I hate to do this, but would you mind hopping back to item 8? We're ready.
Think of a plan.
Okay.
So what we're going to do is we're going to. Item 8B, and we're going to move back to item 8A. And we're still in the public hearing for that item, and we have our applicant here. Welcome, now we can see you, you can see us.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so do any commissioners have questions for the applicant for the La Roco restaurant at this time?
I could do that. I have, I have a question. I'm not sure. Can, can you hear me?
Uh, no, I don't.
Can you hear me?
Oh.
Yes, I'm on it.
Okay.
Okay, let, let me know if you, if you, if you can hear me. Um, I understand that there were at, at least five calls, uh, that went into the Sheriff's Department regarding your place of, um, business, uh, two of which involve alcohol incidents, and I was just wondering, those two incidents, if you have knowledge, were, were the individuals who were under the influence, were they drinking from your facility? Were they, were, were they, did they have any drinks from your facility, to your knowledge?
No, no. Well, yeah, no, we, we, we don't sell in, anyway, you know.
We don't sell now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant from the commission? Okay, I, I do have a couple of questions. I want to make sure, one of my concerns, I live in the area, is the parking in that area. I know there's nothing you can do about it, but I do know it's really tight there. I hope that you fill up the parking lot every night, that would be ideal. But, um, just keep an eye out on that. I know when things do get crowded, um, I don't know if there's anything you can do about it. Uh, concern on my end, the parking lot is, um, a little full at times. During the evening, most of those other businesses are probably closed, though, is that correct?
Are closed, yes.
Yeah, during the day, yes, they are full, but like, for example, right now, it's, it's, it's not too, it's not too crowded right now.
Yeah, the evening is, is empty almost.
Okay, so yeah, because you guys are going to be open most, the latest of anybody in that.
Yes, correct.
I would imagine. Okay, and then also, have you read and do you fully understand all of the conditions that are relating to alcohol sales and public safety issues?
Yes.
Okay, and that includes training of the staff and, um, the, if there are any safety issues that the, that brought to the attention of the sheriff, that your conditional use permit could be reviewed by the planning commission?
Correct.
Okay. And you also understand that the entertainment, uh, permit is a whole separate application, that's not being considered this evening, correct?
That's correct, yes, we know, yeah.
Alright. And did you have anything you wanted to share with us?
Um.
No.
No, I just wanna, I just, you know, gonna.
Who wants to apologize first for, for the delay, for the problems?
This has been my first time ever had this kind of meetings, so, and, and this kind of Zoom meeting. So, I'm sorry.
No, no, no problem. I don't like these kind of meetings, so I'm right there with you. Alright. Well, thank you very much for being here. Um, is there anybody else here to speak on this item at this time? Alright. Then, if there is no objection from my fellow commissioners, I would like to close. Then, if there is no objection from my fellow Commissioners, I would like to close the public hearing on this item and move on to Commissioner move on to Commissioner Discussion. Any discussion on the item, and if there is no discussion, may I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Now second.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Frogasains and a second from Commissioner Smith. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, then Ms. Inman, may we please call for a voice?
Chair Nemeth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
You're still muted, Barton. Bart?
There we go.
Vice Chair Avery?
I'm having a problem with technology too. Just to confirm, the motion is to adopt option one, because I heard something else, but.
Correct, the motion is to adopt option one.
You hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
But you're lagging.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Frog
Yes.
Commissioner Frogasains?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, let the record reflect that the motion carries with five yes votes. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In meeting with us, so. Good job.
Yay.
Thank you.
All right, you are now dismissed.
Okay, thanks so much, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
All right, Ms. Alvarado, let's switch gears and back to item eight B.
Bye again.
All right. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Um, okay, so picking up left off at the floor plan, um, as depicted here on the floor plan, uh, the travel center is considered to be incidental alcoholic beverage establishment, um, and it's, uh, it utilizes, uh, does not utilize more than ten percent of the floor area for the sale, display, and storage of alcohol beverages. Um, also fifty percent, uh, five, sorry. Fifty square feet of the floor area will be used for the display and storage of tobacco products. Uh, the applicant is proposing to operate the travel center twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And although the travel center will be open twenty-four hours a day and seven days a week, ABC restricts the sale of alcohol between the hours of two AM and six AM. And as such, the conditions of approval prohibit the sale of alcohol from those hours. All right, pursuant to Business and Professions Code, um, if the issuance of a off-sale license will result in an undue concentration or increase, uh, that increase the number of licenses within a high crime area, the Planning Commission has authority to, uh, make the recommendation to ABC supporting the issuance of an additional off-sale license, um, if the finding of a public convenience or necessity is made. Um, and this project is located within Census Trap ninety-one zero seven point zero six, which has a population of six thousand twenty-two people. Based on these calculations, up to three off-sale licenses can be granted within the Census Trap. Um, three are, uh, three off-sale licenses currently exist, and approval of the proposed CUP would allow for a fourth license. Therefore, the approval of the proposed CUP would constitute, uh, undue concentration of off-sale licenses, uh, within the Census Trap. Uh, the project site is within Crime Report District twenty-six oh three, which exhibits crime rate at two hundred and sixty-one percent of the citywide average crime rate, and according to Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, there were two calls for service reported near the site for, um, from March eighteen, twenty-twenty to March eighteen, twenty-twenty-one. After reviewing the past service calls within the district, the LA County Sheriff's Department has not indicated any opposition to the approval of the CUP. And, uh, the, the project meets the location standards of an incidental alcoholic beverage establishment, uh, being separated by a, a thousand feet from a sexually oriented business. Currently, KNC, uh, planning commission may consider the following to determine if the CUP should be approved, and the first one is whether the proposed establishment would result in a over intensification of the alcoholic beverage establishments, whether the proposed establishment would be located in a high crime area, information of the surrounding area, and the hours of operation. Um, there are two methods, uh, the first one is the population density method. Um, currently, there are seventy-four off-sale beverage, alcohol beverage establishments within the city uh, with a population of one hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty people. And a citywide population average of one off-sale ABC license allowed per two thousand and sixty-four people. And according to the population density method, the project would contribute to an over intensification because there are three off-sale establishments that are allowed and three licenses currently exist. However, uh, the majority of the existing establishments within the Census Trap are located approximately two miles north of the proposed travel center. The second method for determining over intensification is the retail density. Um, this method determines exactly the over intensified when the number of off-sale establishments within a radius of two thousand five hundred square feet of a subject location exceeds the average of the number of sale, off-sale establishments within two thousand five hundred feet of a random sample of twenty establishments. And based on this method, uh, the site would not have an over intensification because up to nine establishments, off-sale establishments are allowed within the radius, and there are two existing within the radius. And in conclusion, off, uh, off, three options for the planning commission are to approve as amended, uh, continue or deny the project, and option one is recommended. Any questions?
Thank you very mu- very much, Ms. Alvarado. Um, do any planning Commissioners have quest, technical questions for staff at this time? Okay. If there are no questions, then I will open the public hearing on this item. And if you are here to speak on this item, uh, I guess you raise your hand in the Zoom portion, and Renee will open your microphone up. You will have three minutes to speak, and if you do have any questions, um, I will be writing them down, and we will do our best to get them answered um, during our Commissioner Discussion, but it will not be a dialogue between us. So, Renee, do we have any people online?
Yes, we do, Chair Nemeth, we have one raised hand. Kathy McLauren, I will be unmuting your microphone now.
Hi Kathy, welcome. Can you hear us?
I didn't mean to put up my hand.
Well, we're gonna wave to you then, hi.
We have another raised hand on the line two, Chair Nemeth, uh, well, the participant by the name Jess, um, accept my unmuting of your microphone.
Hi there, Jess, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Um, so I just wanted to just raise a couple of concerns, um, and then I guess get some clarification because I wasn't, um, I wasn't aware of like the times, the specific times of the alcohol sales, um, whether they were, you know, in the morning, um, between a certain period, like seven to seven PM. Um, granted that they are open twenty-four hours a day, so that was just, uh, one thing, and then, um, another is the amount of, of crime that that was in the area. Um, so that was just a couple of things that I wanted to get clarification on.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other raised hands at this time?
Not at this time, Chair Nemeth.
Okay, thank you very much. And is our applicant available?
Good evening, Commission, this is Ross with Pilot Travel Centers.
Hi Ross, welcome.
Good, I'm glad you can hear me, thanks for having me tonight.
It's quite a night here.
It is, is. So, I just have a short presentation that I'd like to do, I think it would take me just a couple of minutes, just a brief background of Pilot and a few comments on the site, and then my team and I will be available for questions.
Thank you very much.
So I am going to try to get control of the screen here, please. Okay, can everyone see the map that is on my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So, just a little brief introduction here, uh, Pilot is the largest operator of travel centers in North America with approximately a thousand. Uh, most people recognize the Pilot Flying J brand, so we own both brands, but it's one company. We also have another fuel network called the One Nine Network that comprises probably ten plus other brands. In between those two bran, uh, excuse me, those two networks, um, we have about a thousand plus locations, and we sell approximately eleven billion gallons of fuel a year. So we're the largest retailer of diesel in North America. Uh, we're also one of the largest privately held companies in the United States, and, uh, I believe we're the eighth largest restaurant franchisee in the country as well, as well, excuse me. And, uh, we employ about thirty thousand, uh, people. So, uh, as you can see, we have a large footprint across North America and continue to grow and expand our network. Um, this slide, which I hope you can see, this just gives you some pictures of what our facility would look like on the exterior and interior. Uh, and as Jasmine said, you're gonna see a lot of modern architecture, uh, along with, uh, architectural features and bump outs and awnings and glazing to add a lot of pop. Uh, on the inside, you're gonna see a lot of tile and wood laminates, and, uh, a lot of high lit areas inside to make everything pop. Uh, Pilot has really built its company based on clean, fast, and friendly, and that's the way the entire facility design is going to be. Um, our economic impact study shows that we're gonna create about sixty to seventy jobs. All the jobs except for three would be local, uh, and will be both part-time and full-time positions with benefits at both those positions. Our total sa- uh, annual salary is gonna exceed about a million dollars, and our total tax, um, revenue generated at this facility should be in excess of nine million dollars. Um, I know Jasmine has already showed the site plan, I'm just providing one here with a Google Earth overlay, so you can really see the entire site um, on the parent parcel. Not sure if you can see my hand, but obviously, this is the swap meet, um, with parking. We're just going on this western portion, portion here, and there's gonna be another residual piece up here to the north. Obviously, we know there's been a lot of history of this area, Four Corners, trying to develop over the years, and development just hasn't been able to get off the ground due to some of the lack of infrastructure. And, uh, we recognize that Pilot is gonna make a significant investment in this infrastructure um, in order for our development, and we believe that this is just gonna be a catalyst, uh, for future development, to capitalize on our investment for not only local but regional development, uh, to come to the Four Corners area, uh, along with specifically, these two pieces of property here are prime for future development. Um, we are familiar with the staff report, we reviewed it, we reviewed the conditions of approval, we concur with it. Uh, and with that being said, uh, we can address any questions the Commission may have.
You're muted, Chair Nemeth. Do any Commissioners have questions for our applicant at this time?
Is there gonna be a section of the, um, uh, parcel for overnight parking for truckers?
Yes, sir, so we separate the auto, um, parking and the truck parking. So, the northern piece here, and again, I'm not sure if you can see my hand or not, but everything north of the building would be for the professional driver, the truck driver. Everything south of the building will be for the auto driver. Um, so there's about fifty-five truck parking stalls here in, in the very northern, uh, where you would have overnight parking. Now, I will tell you, obviously, flying, Pilot Flying J is really an interstate-type company. Obviously, this is a great intersection of highways and cut through. So, the dynamic of the truck driver is a little different at this location than a typical interstate. So, you'll definitely have some overnight parking, but I don't know that it will be as much as what we would typically have at a typical interstate site, given the nature of the driver here at this location.
I just spent a week driving across the country, stopping in a whole bunch of these places, and they're, it's pretty nice to have them along the road, along that ten. Um, did about twenty-two hundred miles in an RV, and, um, it's nice to see that coming to Pondale.
Good, I'm glad to hear you had a great experience, thank you.
Mr. Shaver, we did receive a couple of, um, community concerns, and I believe these were emailed to you as well, and I was hoping that you could potentially address. Um, we don't have a name on this submission, but it was wondering if you could tell us who the fast food division would be, and um, also just had that, was, was it taken into consideration, the water and water, and wastewater?
Sure, yeah, so we'll actually have multiple restaurants here, um, it'll be a Subway, a, a Cinnabon, and we, we have our own proprietary restaurant concept called a PJ Fresh. So you actually have three restaurant concepts in there, I think there was also a seating quantity question. Uh, w- we will be less than fifty, but we're currently showing forty-eight on the plans, and, and that's what our space would provide, so, so that should be that. Um, we, of course, by all means, uh, look into water and sewer. We did a sewer area study that staff reviewed, um, and, and of course, we have a lot of historical data, so we have a good handle on our water and, and project, excuse me, projected water and sewer use. And, um, there is substantial, uh, capacity left in the necessary sewer, uh, and is not abroad.
Okay, because that was the other question, was the eight-inch, um, sewer versus installing the fifteen, fifteen-inch sewer. And I know there was quite a study done on that that was included in our cap.
That, that is correct.
So currently, the plan is to connect into the existing eight-inch sewer to the west.
Yes, and we're building a, the, um, a public, a new public line out to Fort Tahoe, um, for future connection. Um, when that main trunk line comes out Fort Tahoe, then we can connect it to that as well, but the existing eight-inch line has, um, substantial capacity remaining and far exceeds what we need.
Okay, thank you very much for answering those questions.
Yes, ma'am.
And are any other questions for our applicant? All right. Then, I shall, if there is no objection, close the public hearing at this time. All right, the public hearing for this item is now closed, and that will bring us to Commissioner Discussion, is there any discussion on this item?
I like the idea that this is coming to Pondale, um, and I, I think it would certainly help generate revenue and, and, and increase employment that would, is desperately needed in our community, so I, I, I like the idea. And, uh, I'm ready to vote on it, but if there's more debate and discussion over it, I'll wait.
No, I would also like to say, um, Dean, I didn't travel as far as you did, but I do travel, and I have to say, truck stops are typically very reliable.
Yes, and clean and nice, and nice to have a bathroom and, and parking if you need to spend the night, so it's, it's always a welcome um, sight to see a pilot.
And, um, I also, I do know that we do have so much, um, especially with the Amazon facility here now. And um, I also, I do know that we do have so much, um, especially with the Amazon facility here now. There's a lot more truck travel. Um, and Pear Blossom just being redone. I know there's a lot of travel going along that area, so um, I personally think I will um, kind of mimic what Commissioner Smith said, but I think it's an exciting thing, exciting to see jobs and growth and development. So yeah, and it'll be, I don't know what that small chunk um on the east side of all of this will be, but I assume it'll be something at some point. So, um, so we are um approving quite a few things in our motion. So if somebody will make a motion, just remember that it's it's the parcel map, the C U P and the site plan review, and adopting the mitigated mitigated negative debt.
I'll make a motion to approve option one as amended.
Hold the second motion.
Go ahead, Dean, you got it.
Yeah. All right, so I heard that we have a motion from Commissioner Henderson, and I'm gonna go with a second from Commissioner Smith? Any?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? All right, then Ms. Inman, can we please call for a voice vote on that?
Chair Nemeth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Vice uh Commissioner Foggasans, pardon me?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Let the record reflect that the motion passes with five yes votes. Thank you very much for your time, everybody being here for this item.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. All right, and then that will bring us to item eight C. Ms. Taggart?
Yes, this will be presented by Justin Sauter.
Good evening, Planning Commission.
Good evening, and our, is our applicant available and online connected?
Uh, when I checked, he was.
Okay.
Can you see my screen?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Awesome. All right. Well, good evening. Tonight, we have appeal twenty-one zero zero one. The applicant is Citizens for Responsible Solar. The applicant is requesting the approval of appeal twenty-one zero zero one to overturn the hearing officer's approval of site plan review twenty zero zero nine. The appellant claims that the initial study mitigated negative declaration prepared for the project failed to comply with the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, and that the city and Lockheed failed to comply with procedures of the Palmdale Native Vegetation Ordinance. The original project was a request to develop a utility-scale solar power generating facility located at the Lockheed Plant Ten facility. The solar facility would be located on one hundred forty acres of vacant land bound by Tenth Street East, Fifteenth Street East, East Avenue P and Blackbird Drive, which I see is not labeled, but this is Blackbird Drive right here. Prior to the project approval, staff received letters from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife as well as Adams, Broadwell, Joseph, and Cardozo attorneys-at-law regarding the draft initial study. The Department of Fish and Wildlife outlined concerns regarding biological resources. The attorney letter outlined concerns regarding biological resources as well, such as Western Joshua Tree, as well as the potential exposure of valley fever, and finally began the failure to comply with the Palmdale Native Vegetation Ordinance. Staff responded to the California Department of Fish and Wildlife letter and the attorney letter and made minor edits that were included within the final initial study, as well as added conditions of approval to the project. The project was then approved by the hearing officer on February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, and Adams, Broadwell attorneys-at-law submitted the appeal on March eighth, twenty-twenty-one. The appellant submitted the same justification from their original comment letter on the initial study as the justification for the appeal. The concerns raised by the appellant in the appeal application have already been addressed as outlined in the response provided to the appellant, which was included with an appendix J of the final initial study. Any revisions to the initial study required as a result of the letter were included in the I S, in the initial study prior to adoption of the uh, by the hearing officer. The appellant is requesting that the planning commission overturn the hearing officer's decision on the basis that the initial study does not adequately disclose, analyze, or mitigate risk to special status species, the potential to expose the public to valley fever, and further claims that the applicant and the city failed to comply with procedures of the Palmdale Native Vegetation Ordinance. The hearing officer determined that the initial study does adequately disclose, analyze, and mitigate potential risk by including a Joshua Tree survey within appendix I of the initial study, as well as mitigation measures for Western Joshua Tree. Lockheed has also coordinated with the Department of Fish and Wildlife and submitted incidental take permit for the taking of Joshua Trees on-site, and that's a pursuant to the California Endangered Species Act. There have been standard dust control measures have been included as conditions of approval to reduce the exposure to valley fever, and additional language has been added to the air quality section of the initial study to further address concerns with air quality. Finally, Lockheed has been conditioned to provide a native desert preservation plan prior to issuance of grading permit, thus complying with the Palmdale Native Vegetation Ordinance. In order to adopt the initial study, the environmental assessment must determine whether there's substantial evidence that a project would result in a significant impact to envi- to the environment. It must also include effective mitigation measures to minimize potential significant impacts, as well as evidence to support the determination that there will not be a significant impact to the environment as a result of the project. As concluded by the hearing officer on February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, there is substantial evidence that the project will not have a significant effect on the environment with the mitigation measures incorporated. The planning commission has three options tonight. Option one is to adopt the resolution denying appeal twenty-one zero zero one and upholding the hearing officer determination. Option two is to continue the project, and option three is to approve the appeal denying the hearing officer's approval of the site plan review, the mitigated negative declaration, and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sauter. Commissioners, do you have any technical questions for staff at this time? Okay, then at this time, I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If you are online to speak on this item, you will have three minutes, and um, is there anybody with a raised hand out there?
There are no raised hands at the moment, Chair Nemeth.
Okay, and is our applicant here?
Yes. Good evening.
Welcome, Mr. Jones. Thank you for being here.
Of course.
Do you have anything you would like to share with us?
Uh, yeah, I just, if I could, uh, my name is Kyle Jones. I'm here on behalf of Citizens for Responsible Solar, uh, which includes local Palmdale residents, workers, and labor organizations who are committed to enforcing agency compliance with laws that require analysis, disclosure, and mitigation of significant environmental and public health impacts in order to ensure continued growth that is sustainable for the community. Uh, because the city prepared an unmitigated negative declaration, the fair argument standard applies, which creates a low threshold for requiring preparation of an environmental impact report and affords no deference to the city. The city, therefore, has no discretion as to whether to prepare an E I R when it's presented with substantial evidence that a project may have a significant impact. Uh, in this case, we reviewed the M N D with several experts in their respective fields. Um, and there are at least three reasons the city was required to set aside the M N D and prepare an E I R for the project. Um, we included substantial evidence, uh, including expert evidence that the project would have impact or may have impact on valley fever. Um, valley fever is caused by spores which are endemic to Los Angeles County that gets stirred up during grading for project construction. Uh, these spores can infect workers and the public, leading to illness and can even cause death in some instances. Um, the initial I S M N D failed to disclose or mitigate this risk at all, uh, and we feel that the response was uh inadequate because the spores that cause valley fever are not addressed by dust control measures. Uh, they're generally smaller than dust particles that are addressed by dust control measures and therefore can still have an impact on the public. Second, we provided substantial evidence, including expert evidence, that the project would have bi- or may have biological resource impacts. Uh, we, the city failed to consider substantial evidence before that birds collide with solar panels. It's a well-documented fact that solar panels attract migrating birds who are killed when they try to land on panels. We provided expert uh evidence to this, to this fact. Uh, the city and the M N D failed to disclose, mitigate, or analyze these impacts. Uh, the responses to to our evidence do not include any new evidence at all. Instead, they only provide short, unsupportive narrative. As a result, the city lacks the discretion to approve this project without first consider- preparing an E I R that considers these impacts. Third, the city failed to adequately mitigate impacts to Joshua Trees. Uh, in the responses to our comments, the the M N D proposes new mitigation involving conservation easements to uh, revegetation and conservation easements to mitigate the destruction of the trees on-site. Uh, however, courts recently held the use of conservation easements cannot sufficiently mitigate impacts under CEQA. Thus, a significant impacts to Joshua Tree remains, which must be addressed in the E I R for the project. Uh, and 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 finally, and just in regards to the the uh native uh plant ordinance, uh, we note that the the ordinance requires the preservation plan to be submitted as part of the project's application. Uh, here, it it still hasn't been provided, thus the public is unable to ascertain whether or not it would actually uh, provide the benefit it's it's supposed to provide. It should have been part of the application uh per the ordinance. And so for these reasons, we urge the city to uh approve our appeal and reject the site plan review until an E I R is prepared for the project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. Do any commissioners have questions for the applicant at this time? Okay. Are there any raised hands at this point for this item?
Not at this time, Chair Nemeth.
Okay, then, if there is no opposition from my fellow commissioners, I will close the public hearing on this item and move on to commissioner discussion. Do we have any questions to talk about here? I have to say, a lot of this is a little over my head, um, on the legal end of it. So I'm gonna defer to you, Commissioner Smith, the legal one.
I figured you were gonna go there. No, I I I I only had concern about the fact that the uh, the biological resource impact regarding the uh birds and the solar. Uh, I've I've spoken to a number of people who have actually experienced some of that from what I gather. I didn't know that that was a major issue out here, so I I did read the report and I did see that as a concern. I did speak to city staff about that as well. Um, so I I certainly understand the impact uh behind that. Um, but I do believe for the hearing officer, uh, this has gone before my hearing officer, and um, the conclusion has been that there is no substantial significant impact um regarding the environment. Um, and and looking at the reports that have been submitted so far, um, I do understand what um, what uh, Mr., I believe it's Mr. Jones, uh, uh, gave in his presentation, and and I hear I I I get that they're not happy with the response that the city provided and that they think and they believe a E I R will be probably a better approach to it. Um, but I I I'm still a little bit ambivalent on the, on the uh, on the birds. I I think, you know, they're such an awesome species, so um, I I I'm still a little bit ambivalent on that one, but that that's all I can say about that right now. I haven't decided how to move forward on this yet.
All right, thank you. Um, I do have to say, in looking at all of the information, my understanding is the majority of the concerns um of the appeal for Citizens for Responsible Solar do appear to have been addressed um through the original document, and I believe that um when they did the minor adjustments to it after the letters came through prior to the approval by the hearing officer, I feel very confident that they were addressed and um that the mitigating measures are going to make it um biologically safer and that it does um comply with all the CEQA regulations. And it was interesting to see how the, uh, even with the bird issue, how they um, the angle of the the positioning of the panels and the rotation of them and everything does play into that and that they are um able to hopefully not cause that late effect wherever it would crash into it. So, any other discussion on this item, or if there is no discussion, may I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt option one of eight C, denying the appeal.
Okay, let me, the records show that I have a motion from Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Avery, you disappeared.
I'll second it, Chair.
Okay. All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Henderson and a second from Commissioner Foggasans. Barton, can you hear me? I don't wanna go forward without number five here. Come back, Bart. Yep, okay, I see his name again. He's super laggy now. Oh, oh, he's coming, maybe? There, wait, I hear noise. Are you there, Bart?
Yeah, I um, I lost the connection of if there's anything that was perfect, and I I didn't hear a motion. My screen just went blank there for about a minute. I didn't hear a motion.
We, okay, perfect. So we have a motion.
What was that?
Adopt the resolution denying the appeal, and we have a second on that motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right. Mr. Doran, are we okay if we can't see Mr. Avery?
Yeah, actually, I just had one quick question for Commissioner Avery. Um, I I know he cut out for a short period of time, but I just wanna make sure that he was uh, able to hear the the, all of the discussion on the item and and not, and I'm just concerned that he missed something, but if he if he caught everything prior to the motion, then I think we're okay. Commissioner Avery, were you able to hear the the balance of the of the public comment and the commissioner discussion?
I'm back, I'm back now, I guess, Chair.
Can you hear us, Bart?
Uh, yeah, yeah. I can see myself on this plane, and I see Carly.
You're kind of frozen there. Commissioner Avery, um, I'm going to send you the call-in number, so that way you can call in, and we can hear your audio that way. I will send you the call-in number now. Okay, so as soon as we have [inaudible]. Hi, Barton. The concern is, were you able to hear the public comments?
Hey, can you hear me now?
Yes, but you're still fuzzy.
Yeah, I heard all the public comments. Uh, it, my computer died. Uh, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Let me try- Let me try calling. Can you hear, unbelievable.
Hey, are you back on, Bart?
Sure, I just sent him, um, my panelist information, Carleen, so when he does call in, it will perhaps show my name twice, um, but hopefully he'll be able to connect via phone.
If it was a bandwidth problem, I don't know that another weigh-in is gonna help, but maybe. Hi, Barton. Can you hear us?
Can you hear it?
I can hear you.
Hello?
Hi, Bart.
Hello?
I'm sorry, this is kind of funny. If I had a gavel, sir, and I were closer.
I can hear you, too.
You'd be in trouble.
Okay, back to the council chambers.
Yep, thank goodness. All right, Barton, were you able to hear the public comment on this item? I appreciate everyone's patience with this.
Uh, I'm going to call Commissioner Avery, and is it okay if he just speaks through my cellphone?
Mr. Dorn? You're, you're muted, Noel.
Hi, Chair Nemeth, um, I actually, and this is Carleen Saxton, I am currently talking to Commissioner Avery, and he did confirm that he heard all of the public comment, he's still having a difficult time, unfortunately, the passcode is claiming is incorrect, we're gonna try it one more time, um, and then I'll update you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Think I'm back up.
I think you are, I can hear you.
Try this real.
Can you hear us?
Sir, thanks, Carleen. Yeah, I can hear you.
Perfect, all right, so, we just wanna make sure that you were able to hear the public comment from, uh, Kyle Jones on this item.
I heard the public comment, it, it cut off about a minute into something you, uh, your comments that you were saying, so I did hear all the public comments, that's correct.
I will not take that personally, Mr. Avery, um, but, uh, currently. We have, um, our motion then is to recommend that we adopt Resolution PC twenty twenty-one dash zero zero nine, denying the appeal, and upholding the hearing officer determination. The motion was made by Commissioner Henderson, and there was a second by Commissioner Frogasains. So, is there any discussion on the motion? All right, if there's a discussion on the motion, then I would like to ask Ms. Inman to please take a voice vote on this item.
Chair Nemeth.
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Frogasains?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, let the record reflect that the motion passes with five yes votes. Thank you very much, everybody, for your patience with our technology issues here, and I appreciate your attendance on this hearing item.
Thank you.
And that will bring us to item nine, Staff Communications.
Thank you. Um, so I did want to note that we do have a couple of items for tentative agenda for next month. One is a zoning ornament, ordinance amendment for, um, wireless facilities, wireless telecommunications facilities, and the second one is a major modification to a tentative map for phasing. Um, I did also want to mention, we do have a couple of very important surveys going on right now. One is for the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. Um, you can take that survey by going to the city's website and in the search field, putting in local hazard, it'll take you to that section, and, um, and you can take that survey. And then the second one is for the Avenue Q Corridor Study. We are in the process of, um, looking at some multi, multimodal access to try to get people to and from the future high-speed rail station, um, along the east side of Sierra Highway, so it goes from Twentieth Street East to Sierra Highway, and there's a survey currently at avenueqcorridor.com, um, that we would encourage everyone to take, so you could weigh in on that really cool, um, study. So that was all I had.
All right, thank you very much. Um, I do have a question for you, though, especially based on our lovely technological advancements of this meeting.
I am sure I have good news for you.
Can we please be in chambers next month?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, good, but none of this will happen there.
Thank you, Bart, Bart, was that intentional?
No, did, uh, see, I, that was, that was kind of embarrassing, but I guess, who knows what's going on here?
Hey, it's gonna get us back in the council chambers next month, that's all that matters. All right, so Planning Commission Communications, um, fortunately, we will be, um, back in chambers next month, that'll be exciting and good. Um, do any commissioners have any communications to share? Okay. Uh, Megan, I just did wanna say thank you, um, last week I had, um, brought up a question to Megan about some of our cell tower, um, CUPs, and how I was concerned that they weren't necessarily being followed, and she got back to me right away, so thank you, Megan, and thank you, Jasmine, and anybody else who worked on that, I do appreciate it. I was very grateful, and thank you, Renee, I know I can't see you, but behind the scenes there, you're doing a great job keeping all our raised hands or non-raised hands, or whoever wants to talk to us, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, if there are no other communications, then I will adjourn this meeting to our regular Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, May thirteenth, at seven PM in council chambers. Thank you very much for being here.
Night, Emily.